Okay, stand for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public statement this evening?
I would.
You want to make a public statement?
I would.
Okay, good.
A brief one. I actually came tonight when I met Paul McMaster. I lived and born for many years. Last year I've lived on Kedneywood Drive at Sandwich. Actually came back to the meeting because I want to make sure that the people in town and everybody involved in the schools realize what they're losing and the commitment made by two long-term members, Emily and Maureen. And as I could not come, I could not not come this evening, I think it's just important that you folks get the tribute that you deserve for the many years you've put in. As I said earlier, I know that I'm a Catholic, I'm going to get to heaven earlier because I spent four years, five, four or five years in purgatory on this little committee. So depending on your faith, it could be an upside for you. It is a thankless job. But both of you were involved in so many major things for this school system during years. The administration completely changed, COVID, the negotiations that happened after that. It has been thankless and you folks have done a fantastic job. I'd say, Maureen, I loved working with you. You always did your homework. I mean, no matter what we were talking about on the committee, you knew one heck of a lot more about than I do. But you do, you always do your homework and you've always been a really strong advocate for both the staff and all the families unborn. And you should be commended for the service that you've done. And it's a loss. And I've been with you for what, four or five years?
Five years.
Five years. I mean, so you're a lot earlier than I was. You really provided strong leadership at a time that was, that was really, really needed. And again, especially going through something like COVID. And the one thing I share is, you know, no matter what issue we'd be dealing with, the first and the last issue in her mind, no matter what the subject was, was this good, was our decision good for the kids unborn? And I think that's huge. You provide many hours weekly, both of you, to the school system. And you perform your job with dedication, patience, and a lot of class, which might be an old-fashioned word, but you really both show. And so, again, kudos to both of you. Thanks for doing this.
Okay, meeting over. All right, thank you. Thanks. That was really, it's so nice that you came tonight. I really appreciate it for Maureen does as well. Okay, for my report, all I have, oh, I have a couple of things. Correspondence is the Cape Cod Collaborative Articles of Agreement. I, oh, I can open it now. I couldn't open it. This is their, almost like their contract, I guess you'd say, with each of the school districts that they work with. I don't know, Maureen, did you want to add anything? Did you want to say anything about this?
It was just updated to include Plymouth as a member, so they will, as of July 1st, will be voting member. And they already have students coming to the collaborative, but they've never had a place at the table, so they do now. And so, this was just a process to get them included. And it just reflects the months of preparation in getting it approved up to Desi and getting their final approval.
Great. We don't need to vote on this, do we?
No.
Okay, all right. That's great. Well, that's great that Plymouth has a seat at their table now. All right, thank you. And then my other announcement, I guess, is the Navigator Awards will be presented in June. Currently, there are only two students nominated, and they're both by the same teacher. So only one teacher has nominated students right now. So I hope that message went out to teachers right before April vacation. And I know that's such a busy time of the year, so hopefully it can get sent out again. And I know that there are a lot of very deserving students and also staff members, because now we give that award to staff members. And there are a few staff members nominated, all very deserving as well. So for anyone listening, please fill out the nomination papers for Navigator Awards. And that's all I have. Student advisory report.
Okay. Hi, I'm Zoe. We're students. Laura is unfortunately playing in, not unfortunately, she's playing the girls across senior night game, so she won't be here. And we don't have any students tonight, so you're stuck with me.
Really like you.
We're highlighting the intermediate school. We're two things, the STEAM symposium and then the Purple Up celebration. So the STEAM symposium happened earlier towards the end of March. It was open to the whole district. It was for students to come and with their families. And there were a ton of different tables set up throughout the first floor of the school and in the cafeteria. And it was just a night to celebrate STEAM, which was science, technology, engineering, art, and math. There were a ton of different activities for them to do. There's some pictures for you here if you go on. There's lots of, like I said, lots of tables. We had different activities, hands-on activities for kids to go around and interact with. Ms. Colbert can definitely tell you, they had a ton of fun across the whole school. There are different organizations there, different schools, students and teachers from all, I think all of the schools of the district were there. Some of the AP Bio kids came down to do a little lab with kids. Addie was there. She had a fun activity with them. And then moving on, in April, we had the Purple Up celebration. So most of you know April is the month of the military child. So we're going to let schools honor with, honor military children and their families on Purple Up Day, which was on April 18th. It was hosted in BLS. Students got to hear about the experiences of military families across the town and specifically in Bourne through their parents and their peers. Colonel Kelly, who some of you definitely know, was there and talked about his experience of being a dad while also being in the Air Force and having kids growing up in the school districts. And how that was challenging and also interesting throughout his process in having kids. And then the BHS chorus and band also got to come and perform a medley of Armed Forces songs. Dr. Joe accepted the Purple Star Award from the Department of Education. And then we just have other pictures. So students were honored with members of military families. They got recognized throughout the day. And some students got to talk. Unfortunately, we don't have any of them here for you tonight, but they had a really fun time with that. They got to be honored for their time and difficulty serving as a military child. And then their parents were also had the option to be there and be honored as well. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Joe?
Well, yep. Great, thank you. I'll pick up right, right where we left off there.
Wait, can I just say something? I forgot to say, welcome, Mrs. Boring to the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm glad to say that. Nice to have you.
Thank you. It's nice to be here.
Thank you so much. Okay, sorry, there you go.
No, I was going to do that when we passed it off. I have very few things to say today because you're going to hear from a lot of people. There's a lot of things happening and a lot of things that have happened. So I know you're going to hear right from them. But I'll pick up right, right where we left off. The Purple Up celebration was really wonderful. It was such an honor. It was the first time that we had a district-wide celebration. We usually, almost always have something at the different schools. BIS is usually the school that does it, does it up big. So we invited all of the military students from throughout the whole district. So I really want to especially thank Bourndale for getting their little kiddos in a bus and getting them over, and our transportation director, Mrs. Downing, to really make all that happen. I want to thank Mrs. Colbert for hosting over at BIS because we had it all, you know, logistically framed out when she had never seen the celebration before. So, and Amory Ridings was instrumental in, first of all, reminding me we needed to start planning it, and then having all the planning meetings and doing so much behind the scenes. But I think probably my favorite part, our keynote speaker was wonderful. We're grateful that he came and shared his story. But we also heard from four students, one from each school. And two were sisters, which was a really nice thing. Hearing right directly from them was, was just magical because they, some of them sugar-coated it a little bit or talked about the joyful things while others really let us know, this is, this is real. And then afterwards, we had a reception. I got to speak with a lot of the families. And as you would expect, as I'm talking with a few of them, saying, oh, and are you excited to go up to the such and such school next year? Oh, well, we'll be moving in June. And so, you know, it's the reality's right there. Then we're going to the next place and the next place. They were just, they would find the silver lining in it. They would really, you know, talk about how they knew that they were serving. But that day, one person RSVP'd to me the day before, said that they couldn't come because they were shipping out the next day. So really, this is, our community has so many military-connected children, whether they're active military or not. And I think to have at least one day that honors them, but also have that education out there for all of the kids in Bourne to realize, you know, some of the, your good friends are living this life, serving our country as a military kid. So it really was very special. With that, and I don't know if we got the full fanfare that we, that we were hoping for that day, so we will put out a press release. We've been a little lagging on our press releases. Bourne Public Schools has four Purple Star designations now because it was one per school. So each of our applications was accepted. That's pretty exceptional. I don't think there are any other districts that have all their schools having Purple Stars. But also, there's only about six in the whole state. So when you think about that, I might be wrong in that, it might be seven. But it's, it's a testament to who we are and what we do. And I'm really very proud. This summer, I'll be presenting to all the superintendents at our executive, our executive conference on Purple Star designation and supporting military kids. So hopefully, there'll be more star applications coming out after that. But I wanted to make sure we got ours first before I told everyone else how to do it. But yeah, I'm truly grateful to all the work that we do every day with our kids and also to all those families. So I couldn't say enough about it. Moving on, the only other thing I had on here was a strategic plan update. The update is that we worked with the graphic designer and they're getting close to a final product. When I have it, I'll share it widely. I know it'll be out before the June meeting, but they didn't have it in time for this meeting. So when it's done, it'll have a dashboard, which is kind of a one-pager, all of our vision and our mission and kind of statistics about Bourne. That's a really nice thing to have for everyone to see who we are. And then it'll be all of the pages all put together. So again, a lot of thanks to everyone who was on that committee. And then the next steps, I know Mr. Geis will share with you more specifics, but we have already started to move forward on our best, best use of facilities plan. And we should have that in late June to share with you first, and then the community through a public forum. So we are right on track with checkmarking our very first action step in the plan. So it's pretty exciting. So without further ado, to my left, right, to my right now is our new assistant superintendent, which many of you know, Christine Boring. She's already hit the ground running while she straddles between the two, between the two jobs. It's been a challenge. I know that, that we're, everyone's excited for you to launch in full time, but BMS is already grieving as we search for a new principal, which is well underway. So we're excited about that. But I'm handing the mic over to you to talk about teaching and learning.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you all. It's definitely an honor to be sitting at the table. So thank you. Happy to be here. It was announced today, officially announced today, that Bourne High School has received the Innovation Career Pathway Designation for information. We're calling it computer science. Dr. Joe and Dr. McGuire were both in attendance at today's STEM Summit for this announcement. And I know Dr. McGuire is looking forward to sharing more about the pathway during her update. Along with this pathway designation, BHS was recently awarded a $35,000 Career Connected Development Grant, which is noted on your agenda. These funds will be used to outfit a new cybersecurity lab. I believe that Mr. Oliver is already doing, might be adding to part as we speak. And so we're going to be supporting that information pathway through this fund, the grants from this, the funds from this grant, excuse me. Continuing in the grant world, Lisa Dix was awarded a $500 L R I G Engineering Grant, which she has used to fund an after-school engineering program for students at each grade level in grades one through five. Projects include building a house for the Three Little Pigs, a zip line rescue, and an egg drop challenge. The grade one program ran yesterday, I believe, and grade two runs tomorrow. So I'm really looking forward to seeing some of the students' engineering projects in action, such fun topics. And while I won't update on every specific grant, I do want to recognize that many of our educators took time to apply for and receive Town of Bourne mini-grants to support different educational projects in their classrooms. And so kudos to all of those grant recipients. And a huge thank you to the Town of Bourne, of course, for that support. As we get closer to the end of the year, we are continuing to administer MCAS in the three buildings that engage in testing and according with the state's schedule. So we've had math and science happening at BMS and BIS over this week and next week. We've been very pleased with the level of investment that we've observed from students during the ELA MCAS. And I know that students are continuing to give their best effort now as well. We are certainly excited about these positive trends with regards to student investment in the test. And I certainly would like to acknowledge all of the work our staff has done to help this. That's a lot to get the kids excited about a standardized test and giving their best effort. And the staff has really gone above and beyond to prepare our students incredibly well to take MCAS, but also just to kind of get that energy up about the testing process. So, you know, again, huge congratulations and thanks to them. All of our educators will be engaged in a day and a half of professional development on May 23rd and, sorry, May 22nd, May 23rd. We have a range of professional offerings for our staff, everything from AI and using AI in the classroom, workshop training, collaborative conversations about some of the workshops that people have already attended, transition planning, writing training, all topics that fall within our year-long theme of making connections. Of note, our administrative team will also be engaging in professional development. We will have our second day with Dave Casteline, learning more about effective supervision and evaluation. And finally, we are also very excited to celebrate the retirees from across the district on May 23rd and honor all of their many years of work to the district. Today, we celebrated our first and second-year educators who engaged in the mentor program under the direction of curriculum director Dix and with the support of lead mentors Tara Stanton, Cole Tangue, Beth Nolan, and Lisa DiBiaseo. Our developing educators were highly supported through their first two years of teaching. So thank you to all of our mentors and to our lead mentor team for ensuring that educators who join the district are certainly highly successful and highly supported. We have been celebrating all of our incredible staff members last week and this week, and BMS is going to drag it out a little longer because our sixth grade is away, so we can't do teacher appreciation yet. So from AA Day to Bus Driver Appreciation Day, we had Principal Day, Director Day, Lunch Hero Day. Today is actually School Nurse Day. And then, of course, our Staff and Teacher Appreciation Weeks. We truly appreciate every member of the Bourne Public Schools team. We are glad to have an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of all of our staff members. And thank you, also a huge thank you to our building PTAs who have helped make the Staff Appreciation Weeks very fun and just really highly celebrate our staff. And they'll be celebrating again, BMS, when we're all back together. And before I conclude my report, I do just want to extend, first of all, a huge thanks to Dr. Joe and Jordan, Chris, and Kristen, who have all jumped in to help this transition go smoothly and in many cases pick up pieces of the work that I should be doing until the end of the year. Jordan is, is taking a big chunk right now with a lot of the tuition reimbursement and things that need to be wrapped up to finish off the year. And then I would be especially remiss if I did not thank Dr. Starkey. She left incredibly detailed notes. She had wrapped up much of the work to ease the transition. And she calls and texts regularly to make sure that I'm not screwing anything up. It's really just so appreciative to everyone. But I really, I know she's, she's probably not watching the school committee, but she is absolutely making sure that this is successful for everybody in BPS. So thank you to her.
Thanks.
That's awesome.
Great. Any questions for Christine? All right, moving right along, budget and facilities update.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. I think I dropped in your file the end-of-the-year report audit for you to take a look at. So as a reminder, every year, we have to account for every dollar that comes in and every dollar that goes out. The data collection is entered by hand into what I would call a pretty large spreadsheet of over 2,000 lines and multiple columns. It's known as the end-of-year report. Takes about a month to complete in a good year. It's audited every year for the state regulations. And auditors do get paid to find errors. I don't think they get paid per error, but that's their job. A little disclaimer there.
In the job description.
Right. I think they get paid per error.
And it was a very clean audit. It'll never happen again. I don't know if they were in a hurry. I, there was only four little things. Two of them weren't my own. It was the information the town gave me that they got dinged in their audit for. So I only had two little errors, totally mustin', I think, $3,000, which has never happened.
Nice job.
Got myself in.
Jordan, take the hat off again. Fabulous job.
It'll probably never. I think they just nearly did it done. Anyways, I'm required to amend that report. I've already done those amendments for those two little financial things that they, that they did find. Other than that, it was, can't wait for the next one. Right around the corner, still October. There's three left in my career.
Maybe they'll be in a hurry for those, too. You can dream.
Yeah, you can dream. The district would like to thank the town and the voters for their continued support in not only voting through our FYI '26 budget, operating budget for next year, but also before supporting a number of capital requests that we pushed forward as well. So they approved all of our capital requests, which consisted of the opium for the solar decommissioning at $50,000, flooring replacement for here at BPS. Hopefully, that $55,000 will still cover getting the auditorium done and the guidance suite as well. We also supported a new minibus, only one this year, because the price doubled to $120,000 from $65 in one year.
Oh, wow.
Maybe it'll come back down. Who knows? The, they also gave us an additional $95,000 to get the chiller done. That was an amendment to Article 6 and J that was voted on in October at the 2024 special town meeting. And that amount was $280,000. So now we have ample money to get that chiller project underway. And the school committee will be voting to award the contract later in the meeting. As part of our new strategic plan, we have hired NESDEC to conduct a best use of facility study, and it is well underway. We're on track for a draft to be out in late June. We provided an awful lot of data to their team. They conducted both virtual interviews with the building admin as well as site visits so they could get actual eyes on our spaces. They've also spoken to local realtors to get a sense of the housing market. They've spoken to the town planner to gain an understanding of permitted housing developments and any of that are also in the pipeline. We anticipate that that report will be very comprehensive and will be used to inform our next steps as far as our building usage goes. That concludes my humble report.
Jordan, would you like us to take up the vote right now on, I know we have to vote to engage Gale Inc. as the owner's project manager?
Madam Chair, your meeting.
Yes, we'll do that now. Make it easier on. Okay. So we need a vote to engage Gale Inc. as the owner's project manager for the BMS solar project removal.
So moved.
Second. Any questions about this? Okay. So all those in favor of engaging Gale Inc. as the owner's project manager for the BMS solar project removal?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. And then we also need a vote to award the contract to Enterprise Equipment for the replacement of the BMS chiller.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of awarding the contract to Enterprise Equipment for the replacement of the BMS chiller?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Check that off the list. Thank you.
All right, moving on to get to hear about technology now. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all having a good day. So, just a couple of quick updates, starting with Parent Square, which I'm sure you've all heard about a little bit by now from the messaging that I've been putting out. We have been slowly rolling out the launch of it and most recently inviting parents and caregivers to join. We currently have over 600 parents and caregivers that have registered for an account. This allows them to customize when and how they receive notifications from the school district. If they don't register for an account, they will still receive messages from the district, be it email, text, or phone calls, depending on how we push out the notification. So really, the difference is there, they, you can pick and choose how you want to receive those notifications and whether or not you want a daily digest or instant notification. Regardless of what you choose, we still have the ability as a district to push out emergency notifications immediately. So this is more so for those newsletters and flyers that we, we're going to be pushing all that out through the Parent Square application. As a reminder, we are currently in a soft launch with the district being fully onboarded, with the staff trained and using the platform to start of the '25, '26 school year. There are several grants that I'm working on spending down with technology around the new information pathway at high school. We're, I'm looking forward to really customizing that space, the classroom here, and putting the technology in place that the, that'll better for the students. Also in the process of replacing and adding several security cameras at the intermediate school in Bourndale, and also working on some additional access controls at the schools, which are the door fobs to allow access. And as many of you may know, Mrs. Bisnet, my technology ESP, who has, who has been instrumental with keeping the technology up and running around the entire district, is retiring at the year's end. So I've been working on an updated job description, which better reflects the needs of the district. You'll see that policy later. It should be in your pack, and you should see that, we'll have that policy brought up later on in the meeting. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank her. You'll probably hear me thank her again at the next meeting for her, I believe, over 20 years of service to, to the district. And she, I don't know, I can't keep up with her some days. So she will be sorely missed. And that is my technology update.
Thanks, guys. Question about Parent Square?
Yes.
Is it, is Power School separate or is that part of?
So Power School's separate. So Parent Square is just the thing, it's the community, it's the unified communications platform.
Okay.
So instead of, right now, we're currently using, we're using School Messenger at the district level to push out mass notifications for school closings and different things beginning of the year. Then we're using Smore to create newsletters at both the district and school level. And then the classroom. Oh, yes, thank you. And then also at the classroom level, there's, as you may know for the parents that are here, we're, different classrooms are using different platforms to communicate with parents. So this will be the one and only platform that the entire district, from the classroom level to the building level to the district level, that we'll be using. And this, this also came out as part of our strategic planning process.
Including athletics and extracurriculars. So you won't have all these different apps you're trying to keep track of.
Oh, okay. So one place.
One place.
Except for the grades, but you have to go to a different place.
Correct. Correct. This is really just communication. And if you sign up for it, and once we get everyone comfortable with it, it will also allow parents and caregivers to directly communicate with, direct message their classroom teacher, their students' classroom teachers as well.
Okay.
Instead of using some of these other ways to communicate. And obviously, there'll be parameters in place around, you know, office hours versus, you know, a lot of times that, and my, I did, I did a lot of research on this platform. So in speaking with colleagues from other districts, they were saying originally when Parent Square came out was that there was no timeframe. So if a parent were to send a message at 11 o'clock at night, it would, it would go off if the teacher had it on a device or, so now, there's office hours in place there. But at the end of the day, there's, it's a very powerful platform where eventually, I would love to see, in working with the principals, permission slips for field trips going through the electronically, volunteer signup lists, everything.
Yeah, great.
The goal, the end goal here is to filter it all through this platform. It's going to take some time. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen at the beginning of next year. But I'm hoping by the end of next school year that we'll be there.
So a teacher's going to have to use this platform instead of like Class Dojo and everything else?
Yes. Yes. No more, no more Class Dojo, no more Remind. Actually, Parent Square bought our Reminds. That's another app that parents were, that teachers were using.
Okay, that's great.
And then I think there's a couple of other platforms as well that was in place. So everything will be.
Is there a legal reason why we have to do that?
Yep.
There is a legal reason why we have to do that, Mr. Geis. So Parent Square, the big thing with having all these non-sanctioned applications that staff use, and it's not unique to Bourne, it's, you know, it's like this across the, across the state, is that just like email communication, any communication that's sent in the official capacity of a, of the school district or the school system, teachers, coaches, administrators, needs to be archived for seven years in the public records law. So everything that goes through Remind- So everything that goes through Remind is archived for seven years. So we're now, we will now be in compliance with the, the public records requests as well as, it's all, it's FERPA compliant. It's a number of different, it's compliant across the board.
I'm thinking of those reminder parents were.
Did I say that?
But, but appreciate.
Parents were brought that.
Yes.
But we're not using it.
We're not using it, yes.
Will that eliminate email to the teachers as well?
No, so email will still be a sanctioned way, that'll still be a way to communicate. But I think we spoke about, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Joe, is that'll be through, there'll be really three methods. It'll be through Parent Square. It'll be old-fashioned email, it's old-fashioned. Email, and then a phone call.
Okay, so we'll still have the phone calls, like an emergency.
Absolutely.
Yes. Oh, yes. Absolutely. Yeah.
And the last piece, if you think way back, we had things changed with Power School and who, who, who they allowed for these platforms. So actually, during my time, this would, this one will be the third or even fourth platform that's a plugin with Power School. So when I first started with, during COVID, we had the ability to send texts to people's phones for emergencies, but with the current one that we have, we don't. With the one that we will have, Parent Square, we will. So that was an important piece to me because a lot of people told me, my preferred method is to just get a quick little text message for snow days or, you know, all these different things, because they're much more, more apt to go, oh, okay, when people aren't always looking at their email. So it's really important, I'll, I'll give you that pitch one more time, it's really important for parents to choose their preferred methods because everyone has a preference, but also to know that in an emergency, you're going to get it in five ways to Sunday. It's going to come right through your phone and on your email and, and, you know, calling as well, so we won't lose that capability.
And one other piece I'd like to add is the important part about registering for an account, like I said, regardless of how, if you register or not, you're still going to receive those emergency notifications, is that when you register for an account, it asks you to verify that your email address is correct and your cell phone number is correct. And it'll send you a code to, almost like when you sign up for an account online, it'll have you validate, it'll send a validation code to your email as well as your cell phone. You have to put that in, and if it's not correct, you can make an update to that, and we get that notification every morning now. So already, since we've been rolling this out, myself as well as our data specialist has been going in and making those updates in Power School, because all this information is coming from Power School overnight. So if you correct it in Parent Square, we get notified of it, and we make those changes in Power School. So it's helping us keep clean data as well. We found that a lot of telephone numbers are out of date, sometimes email addresses. So this is also an important way to keep us up to date with all this information.
Do you need a code to register, or you can just go on the new platform and just hook up with?
You should, if you haven't yet, you will be receiving the invitation of slowly rolling it out.
Okay, so not everyone's got it?
Yeah.
Have any internal questions?
Thank you.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Kristin Donahue.
Thank you. So like Jordan, I have an update from our TFM that you have heard about all year, so the data was released. We did fairly well. Out of approximately fifty-seven indicators, we demonstrated compliance in fifty out of the, out of the meeting. So there was offsets, but the remaining seven were partially met, so there was nothing that was not met in any capacity. So some of the partial mets were because elements of an indicator may not have been completed or the consistency of the implementation wasn't there. So relatively minor fixes. I have been working with Desi to draft the corrective action plan. I do need further record to identify the areas that we're going to be targeting. They will include specific discipline-related recommendations when completing evals. What I mean is a speech-language pathologist, for example, in their evaluations, writing specific recommendations regarding that discipline, that criteria area, specific related to speech and language. And then we have to continue to ensure that all team members are in attendance at the meeting and maintaining timelines for documentation and distribution, three-year testing requirements and distribution, and IEP timelines. And we, the issue that we had with the IEP timelines that was acknowledged by Desi is Desi has a relatively new or a tated new stance, likely from a federal government feedback, about what it means from the point of initial testing to IEP distribution. So we've always, and many across the state, we're all receiving this, is that you used to be able to, or it was interpreted that when a parent signed for consent for testing, you had approximately forty-five school days to meet, to review that. The way the federal government is asking that, we interpret that, is that it is, yes, you have forty-five days to test, but you cannot extend that for distribution of the IEP. So you have to also incorporate the development of the IEP if that, if that child qualifies and have that out with the testing within forty-five days. So it's just, it's consolidating the timeframe a little bit, but we're all working on that, so that wasn't unique to just Bourne. And then some other areas that are really just some tweaks to, to some of our practices involve things with proportion share, which is the, our collaboration with the private schools within town, and then working on our early literacy, our de-cap and home hospital procedures. So right now, the draft has been submitted to Desi, and all the action steps seem to be manageable if they are accepted. And Desi will be out again looking at the data in the fall and a final site visit in January, so I anticipate full compliance by that point, so. The only other two updates I have is ESY programming is in full swing. Families are submitting their commitments to the program. We have ESY staff pretty much secured, and they will be getting their cohort lists of assignments for that relatively soon. And continuing with the PD piece, we have a special PD for SLPs, OTs, PTs, and APE. They'll be working with Dr. Jean Hollenbeck, who came out one of our last sessions. She is an OT who specializes in how to provide specialized services within the general education classroom to facilitate inclusion. So the feedback was phenomenal. She was willing to come back out for another session and work with them, really nitty-gritty, and looking at their caseloads and how to develop kind of some schedules, primarily for, for next school year, but starting to look at the data now to so, see how we can better group students. So excited about that. Please stay tuned.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
And then lastly, we have our announcements and correspondence, so I know that the principals are here. I can't really see past the podium. Would you like to start, Dr. Maguire?
Oh, I would love to.
Usually go with the little first, but if you.
Top down today.
Is that okay?
Thank you. I love it when this happens. Thank you. So we had a wonderful opportunity to go to Gillette Stadium today for the STEM Summit. And at that time, they announced that we are the recipient of our fourth Innovation Career Pathway in Information, otherwise known as Computer Science. Just a reminder, ICPs provide students with high-level and technical coursework related to their field of interest. Students not only gain knowledge and skills from the programs, but they earn a designation on their transcript denoting participation in the pathway, and they receive spec, special recognition and commencement. As with all pathways, students must take two technical courses, two advanced courses, and complete a hundred-hour internship in that area of study. We have Business and Finance, Life and Environmental Science, and then Healthcare. For our new pathway, Information, we have Computer Science Essentials, Cybersecurity with the new lab space that's coming up, and then AP Computer Science Principles and Advanced Placement Computer Science A. So those are the four classes that students would take within our math department to earn that designation. So we're really thrilled about that. DECA had a wonderful experience in Orlando. They underwent leadership training and subject-specific workshops to further their business skills, further develop those. And they received a gold-level certification for the School-Based Enterprise Project, which is our school store that should be open within the next, I would say, first week of June. So they're working really hard to get all the merchandise and get that, that space up and running. We can't wait to show it to you when it opens. This week, last week and this week, we have students taking advanced placement exams, which is the culminating assessment of their year-long study in college-level coursework. Our students have done a wonderful job and our staff preparing them for each of those exams. It's a grueling experience, a demanding one, and hopefully a rewarding one. They've been working on those. This upcoming weekend, on Friday and Saturday, SpongeBob the Musical will be taking place at seven PM on Friday and one and six on Saturday to avoid conflict with Mother's Day on Sunday, so we hope you can make it to one of the shows. We're really glad to be offering the second-year partnership with Bourne Police and Bourne Fire on our distracted driving event, mock car crash in advance of the junior prom next week. This is a really important opportunity to educate our students, not just on drinking and driving, but distracted driving in general, and the implications and the impacts of decisions that come with large-scale events like graduation and prom, but also just every day with cell phone use and really that other, having peers in the car, distracted driving. So we're upping our game this year with some student actors. This will be a simulated event that really helps students start to make those connections of just how big of an impact our decisions can have. And our counselors and administrators are partnering with our first responders to run some processing groups after that event so that we have the opportunity to talk to all our juniors before they move forward through the end of the year. Our spring concert is May thirteenth at seven PM in the auditorium. This is bittersweet for Mrs. Fornier, her last school spring concert here at the high school, and then followed by the junior prom on Friday evening. We're very excited to see all our students decked out. I'm wishing Mrs. Hawks and her community volunteers and parents so much success in their after-prom online party. She met with juniors this week to let them know about all the awesome activities happening, happening at the event, and our students are really excited to participate in that after the prom on Friday night. Next week, we have Math MCAS going on for sophomores on Tuesday and Wednesday. On the twenty-first, we're having, we're hosting an AP Capstone Showcase. So those are students taking our AP Research and AP Seminar courses. We'll show their year-long study and their projects. Two of them are sitting here, the twenty-first. That's during school, and we're looking to do an after-school showing of those as well to partner with the art show happening from four to seven on the twenty-first and cabaret night at seven PM in the music room. And then on May twenty-eighth, our senior internship showcase will begin at four PM, where we have both a reception and then a seated program with speakers. We do our future educator signing, which is really special to Bourne for our students pursuing education in college, and then the public viewing of all of our interns and the work that they've done in their year-long internship experiences. And May thirtieth closes out the month with the last day for seniors. So it's going to be a very quick, exciting, and very involved month of May.
Should I go over there?
If you'd like to. It's like putting on the different hat.
Yeah. I'm going to sit here, but I'm standing over there. Huge congratulations to our theater students, our junior METG selection. All I really need to know I learned by being in a bad murder mystery. Earned a silver medal at the festival, the festival competition on Saturday. It really was, you know, comedies are tough, actually, and it was an unbelievable show. The kids did a really great job. Students Ronan Stanton, Alex Weston, and Claire Canfield, Claire Canfield, each earned individual acting awards, and Sarah Kirk received an individual award for her lighting design. So congratulations to all of those students and also to Carrie Voisler, their director, with the assistance of Kristine. Many of our sixth-grade students are having a blast at nature's classroom. They survived some very rainy weather the first few days and have been enjoying sunshine today. We're looking forward to their return tomorrow afternoon and having all of our sixth-grade students back in the building on Friday. Our eighth-grade students have been engaging in two weeks of learning lunches with local representatives from a variety of professions and range of organizations. We've had people from MMA, we've had Rep. David Vera, just a really large range of people coming in to support our students with their civic action projects. They've been able to do interviews and find out more information, and those have been great. So thank you to Mrs. DiBiaseo, Mrs. Moore, for organizing the lunches, for giving up their lunch every day to run them, to the many people from the community who gave up their time to support our civic action projects. And of course, for our students, they've done a really nice job being super professional and engaged with their own civic learning and engagement. We have our book fair next week. It is buy one, get one, possibly half off, and our, I did not check on that. And our curriculum night with our ice cream social, which is one of our most fun spring events, is Thursday, the fifteenth, from five-thirty to seven. All families are invited to view work from throughout the year. Many of our clubs and classes will also have special displays. That is a really nice night for fifth-grade families to come as well, if students are interested in getting a little preview of the middle school. We're excited for our eighth grade to head to Washington, DC on May nineteenth. And the students staying back at BMS will also have a great week of fun. They do Raptor Week, where they participate in a number of local science-based field trips. Our seventh-grade students are not missing out on the fun. They have their annual visit to Wacoit Bay, where they go through a number of stations and learn about the ecosystem and life in Wacoit. And we have our last Career Connected Learning event of the year, where our grade-seven students will reconnect with the senior interns. Grade-seven students will actually go over during the day of the senior showcase to interact again with the interns that they met with earlier in the year, learn more about their internships now that they're done, and find out what our seniors have gained from the experience. A huge thanks to the Career Connected Learning Grant Team at Bourne Middle School. They planned a number of really exceptional events, very careful planning. They did a lot of pre-work with the students so that when the students were engaged in the activity, they really had a lot of background information and were just very professional and engaged. So very proud of that team, and they really have a solid blueprint. We were grant-funded this year, but I think we have a plan to continue some of the work without the grant next year because they've done such a nice job. So that's fantastic. And then finally, we have our band and chorus concerts on June second and third, so we're looking forward to seeing all of our music students showcase their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I first also want to acknowledge Ann Marie Ridings and the support that she gave for the Peppa Rock Day. Being new, this was yet another unbelievable experience for me. In my twenty-five years in education, I can honestly say I've never experienced a day like Peppa Rock Day. Just the community coming together, the love and the support that the community shows for the families, especially the military children, was incredible, and I don't think that there was many dry eyes in the house when the high school chorus was performing the anthems for each of the branches. So it truly was amazing, and I was just the host. Ann Marie Ridings was one hundred percent the worker behind all of that, so I have to thank her. BIS is definitely soaking up the spring energy with the beginning of May. This week has been very, very busy with teacher appreciation. Each day, our incredible PTA has gone above and beyond, showing their appreciation to our amazing staff at BIS. Monday kicked off with custom-made water cups, to-go cups, for each of the teachers and a water station, so a water bar, for the teachers to make different kinds of water refreshments and their recipes for them. And it was really, really cool to see the thought that went into that. Yesterday, we had bagels and treats for breakfast, and today, we actually had PTA members going around the entire building with a mobile snack cart for all of the teachers, which was a huge thank you at the end of a couple of days of MCAS. So it's been amazing, and I'm excited to see you at the end of the week. I believe this ice cream from C-Scoops is coming in within the next couple of days, so very, very exciting. Mrs. Trot couldn't be outdone with Teacher Appreciation Week, so each day has been a very special game for each of the teachers. And nothing says teacher appreciation like cutthroat games among the staff. Today especially was, for anyone that was seeing TikTok, it was steal the beads. So it was rock, paper, scissors, fold the beads, and you had to, every person you beat, you took all the beads. And so it was, we had to make sure rules were set, that you couldn't leave children unattended at the end of the day to try to hunt down those beads. And it's been, yesterday was Find the Ninjas, and tomorrow's another one. So Mrs. Trot has really outdone herself with, with that. And with all of that, this week has begun the, excuse me, the Math and Science MCAS, Science MCAS for grades five and grade three. Complete, will complete their, their MCAS on Friday for Math. And then next week, we roll into grades four and five for Math. So this extra boost of energy has really been. been wonderful for the kids because they've seen, you know, after hard work, some helping their teachers. They're right behind their teachers when they want their teachers to win. Third graders at the end of the day today were treated with a sneak preview of SpongeBob. You say SpongeBob, and third graders go running. So it was a huge treat to them at the end of their MCAS to watch that. So thank you to Dr. McWire and the entire theater department for coming over to show that. This month, our fourth graders have started to go on their adventures for some field trips. They have visited the New Bedford Whaling Museum, in which I've heard a lot of amazing history. I actually didn't know, I have to say, that there's a connection to Bourne and the Whaling Museum that they all came back and shared with us. So it was really cool to hear their excitement of the New Bedford, and I don't think they put the connection together that there's such a deep-rooted connection with Bourne and New Bedford and the Whaling Museum. At the end of this month, our very talented students will be giving their end-of-the-year concerts with Dr. Smith, and I'm sure he's going to go out with a bang. If anybody knows Dr. Smith, it probably will not be a small production for each of the grade levels, and those will be held May 19th, 20th, and 21st for grades three, four, and five, and they will be productions for families and their classmates and their teachers to come and see. So we're very excited for that and to see the students shine. Thank you very much.
Hi, Buzz. I have something to say, if you don't mind. I think you downplayed, played your role with that military up. You did an amazing job.
Oh, thank you.
Your students welcomed everybody into their home. So thank you very much for that. The teachers, everything was perfect.
Thank you.
So thank you.
All right, Mrs. Carpanino.
You couldn't see me.
I couldn't see one over there.
That's a problem I've had all my life. Good evening, everybody. One of the most exciting things we had actually took place yesterday. We welcomed the class of 2038, so we had our incoming kindergarten students come in. We have currently registered about 100 students for the upcoming school year, which is really fantastic, and we generally bring in about 20 more, 25 more during the summer. So it'll be interesting to see. But that was very exciting. They had a lot of fun meeting one another and going through the events and meeting other families, and they'll be coming back for pops with the principal in June, so they were all very excited for that. So it was great. In addition to all of our love and appreciation that's been going around the last month, I don't know if it's just because we have spring fever too, but it's been really, really great. And again, a huge thank you to the PTA. The job that they do is absolutely amazing, and it's really great to hear the teachers walking around saying how loved they feel and how appreciated they feel. So job well done to the PTA. We couldn't do it without them, for sure. In conjunction with that this week, it's Screen Free Week, which Jen Ward, our health and wellness teacher, puts on for families. She puts out different activities for families to participate in. She's not unrealistic with it. We don't know that all, you know, we don't assume that all families will put down the screens and the iPads and everything else, but there are certainly ways that she helps navigate that a little bit more or less than that time for our students. And it's great because we're able to put in some activities for the kids to do for teacher appreciation, staff appreciation week, that help them kind of put that screen down for a little bit and draw some pictures or write their favorite jokes. That's coming up this week, so that'll be a fun day of homemade jokes from our kiddos. They've mastered the jokes on the milk cartons, so we need to move on from that. Next week, in conjunction with our art show, Mrs. Sheehy's putting on a tiny art show this year, which is very cool and is really exciting. So everything is miniature in the art show, so that would be really neat. Kind of apropos for our building, because we're the tiny ones, so. And the book fair will be open all next week for that. The end of next week, we have our grade two music shows. Mrs. Dolan, and anyone who has been to one of her music shows, she always incorporates such a strong and powerful message and really encompasses everything that is Bourne Dale. So in addition to incorporating our Show Your True Colors at Bourne Dale, which is our theme this year, you will also see that the songs are performed with sign language. Our students with augmented devices will also be voices throughout the show, so it really is all-encompassing for any ability level and everybody that we have in our building. So that's really cool. We have upcoming field trips for all of our kiddos. Initially, they actually all put them in for the same day, and I thought, hmm, that could actually be a really interesting day at Bourne Dale. But they've moved them around. So Wacoit Australia is hosting the second grade students this year. They went last year, absolutely loved it, and couldn't wait to go back. And it's a really great field trip for the students to learn about the natural habitat here on the Cape and get to explore some of that spaces. And we found last year that a lot of our kids actually returned with their families, which was really great. So that's a, that's a nice field trip. Grade one is going to Blake Planetarium down in Plymouth, so they're excited for that. And our kindergarten friends are going to Sashack Farm. So a lot of good field trips coming up. Mrs. Perry, our STEAM teacher, has arranged for our grade one students to have Salt the Whale come and visit Bourne Dale with author Carol Quill-Carlson. And she's going to be coming in and educating the students. There's actually a book about it as well, about a humpback whale that continually turns to the Cape every summer. So another really kind of Cape-y piece that the kids will be able to look out for, and they've already started to learn about where the whale goes, how they can look for salt and everything else. So it's a really neat, neat piece. And June 4th, I know I'm stepping into June a little bit, but we have District Step-Up Day coming up that day, so our second graders are very excited to come over and see Bourne Intermediate School, and our current students go off the next grade, so kindergarten will visit first, and first will visit second grade. So it's just a really neat day to kind of give the kids a glimpse of what lies ahead for them. So it's hard to believe we're already at that point in the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, so on every, on every agenda, we have a calendar of events that is laid out for folks who like to read things this way. And then we also have on our website, which is linked here, a full district calendar that's, that's updated regularly so you can see all, all of these things. So if you didn't catch all that, then you're able to just go right on and see this. One thing that is district-wide that I want to add is that we have another canal walk coming up, and that's through our Building Bridges Parent and Family Engagement. So it is already on the calendar. It's Tuesday, May 27th at 3:30. We did one in the morning before, and now we're doing one in the afternoon for any families that want to join us right after school. It's for families, so kids are invited too, but this really is an opportunity for parents, grandparents, to talk with some of us that will be there, and also, we have a representative from Mass DOT. So we'll meet at the railroad bridge right there in Buzzards Bay Park. We walk until we get tired, and then we come back. So it'll be a really great time. And then to just conclude, I knew you would hear a lot about teachers, staff, nurse, AA, principal, assistant principal, all the appreciation days. I know I missed people. Bus drivers, lunch heroes, we really appreciate everyone in Bourne. We couldn't do this work without them. They're all here 100%, 110% for our kids, and I hope this week, everyone's feeling the love. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to subcommittees. Curriculum Subcommittee?
Meet later on this month, twice, so.
Oh, okay.
No updates.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee did meet, and we do have a few votes on the agenda tonight. So we discussed policy, we discussed a wellness policy that's mandated by the state, came out of the food service audit. The policy, it needs to be revised every three years. So the Wellness Committee needed to revise this. They worked on it with a coach to develop and update a policy. Desi's going to review it, and the policy will be added to the next Subcommittee meeting. Policy KHAA is Distribution of Literature and Information in Schools. This policy was discussed at previous Subcommittee meetings, and we had tasked Dr. Joe to update the policy to make it work for Bourne Public Schools, because she is ultimately the person that approves the policy. I just went offline, so I can't pull it up.
I have it behind you.
Oh, perfect. So this is, this was approved by the Subcommittee, and we brought it to full committee for a vote. You've had a chance. It was in the folder. It is in the folder. Does anyone have questions about that policy? KHAA? It's basically a policy just kind of discussing how we can house the different information that comes in from outside sources, because not everything is really Bourne Public School related, and so we didn't want to have everything in one spot. We wanted to separate that out a little bit. And then Dr. Joe would be the person that approves any of these communications from these outside agencies, which is going to go home to families. So this does require a full committee vote.
I move to vote to approve policy KHAA.
Second. Any questions or discussion on this policy? Okay. So all those in favor of approving policy KHAA?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, policy approved. And then we had a bunch of job descriptions that also were approved by our Subcommittee, and we pushed them to full committee for the vote. So the first is a Digital Integration Specialist.
That's one that Chris referenced earlier.
And so at one point, we had tech ESPs in the buildings, in each building, but obviously this job has changed over time, and that role does not support students anymore. It supports teachers now. So the new job is a non-union position, and it supports educators in the classroom. And so it was created by Chris, and we have approved it. It was also approved by administration, and so we are asking the full committee for a vote on that tonight.
I move we approve the job description of the Digital Integration Specialist. Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving the Digital Integration Specialist job description?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approved. Thank you, Chris, for your work on that.
Thank you.
The next job description was an updated job description for Athletic Director. Dr. Joe and Dr. McQuire worked on this together to modify the current job description, and really, the major change is that the new Athletic Director will not be able to coach. This way, they can dedicate time to the supervisory duties. Another change is that the Athletic Director recommends coaches, but actually does not do the hiring of the coaches. And so this, this job description was also approved by the BEA, and the Subcommittee approved it and is asking for a full committee vote.
Move to approve Athletic Director revised position.
Second.
Any discussions or questions?
Do we still offer athletics down to grade five?
Not at present.
Okay, because it says five through 12 in the job description.
Right. We, we wanted to, we, the reason I kept five in there is because I'm not sure if grades will shift going forward. So in thinking that it might be a possibility, I kept it in there.
And does the Athletic Director still have an administrative assistant to assist? Because this is pretty, pretty comprehensive, you know, of duties, and I always remember them having.
Yes. Yes, there will be one there that's still available. And actually, most things were exactly as it was in the past, if you see the red line version. There were just a few tweaks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the updated job description for Athletic Director?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And then we also have new job descriptions for Registered Behavioral Technician, an RBT, and an Applied Behavior Analyst, ABA. And so this was brought to us by Kristen, and these are ESP positions. They work underneath the BCBA. They're two different certifications, but basically they do the same job at the school level. They can implement the behavior plan created by the BCBA. And this, like I said, these job descriptions were created by Kristen with the help of her team, and we're asking for a full committee vote.
I move we approve RBT, ABA, and SL. We'll do the speech language next.
You'll do them on this.
Let me combine them, or just do RBT and ABA right now.
Second.
Any questions about those positions?
Do we currently have people in those positions?
We do not.
These will be new, but we do have the teacher in those positions, or no?
We have a BCBA.
BCBA.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the new job descriptions for the RBT and ABA?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, great. Another new job description is the Speech and Language Pathologist Assistant. Again, a new ESP position, and similar to the last job descriptions, they'll be able to follow the plan developed by the Speech Language Pathologist.
I move to approve the new SLPA position.
Any questions about this position? Okay. All those in favor of approving the SLPA position?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Approved. Thanks. Thank you, Kristen.
Can I just ask, so both of these assistant positions will be, they're not new to the budget, they're just part of the AAs that will be incorporated in the special?
Could I clarify? So they're currently, we don't have them scheduled to be positions.
Okay.
We just know that if the need arises, we'll have the job description, because it's really going to depend on caseload and IEPs, and, you know, as, as we look at that, we want to have some flexibility in who we can hire and what we need to do. We'll always make it budget-neutral, but yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have for Policy Subcommittee. Thank you. Okay, Budget and Facilities Subcommittee?
I think I've got to take this one for the team.
Yeah.
The Budget Facilities Committee has met three times since last week. Very busy, very dedicated team, a lot on our plate.
And let me just add the dedication that we went to.
Oh, no, it's part of my presentation.
Okay.
Feel free to jump in.
I'll keep it a secret then, until you get there.
I heard you loved it.
We met today, we met last Friday, and we met back on April 11th. And the highlight for both of the esteemed members on April 11th was when we took a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. And I will now open the floor to you.
It was, I thought, I found it very interesting. It was, you see that building, and you imagine what's happening inside that building, and it's very different than what I imagined. All the different rooms that are doing their own little part to get it out in, you know, to its final product, so. It was, it was. Thank you for taking.
They took pictures, they took selfies.
I know. Videos of those, we've been hearing about those wheels, you know, that a piece of-
How big are the wheels, Maureen?
Huge.
Massive.
Huge.
Massive.
Yes.
I mean, definitely.
Yeah.
Taller than the ceiling and.
Yeah.
And they're moving very slowly so that, you know, everything can get.
Processed.
Okay.
I'm getting done.
So thank you, Jordan. I appreciated it. It was, you know, one of my bucket lists before I left the school committee.
Did you get to wear hard hats?
No, we didn't even wear different shoes, let me tell you. It was very, that's how.
Oh, wow.
It was.
I would have thrown them out.
I would have thrown them out.
You all fit.
Every time we discuss the wastewater treatment plant, I've always offered to give a tour, and Maureen, it was on our list.
Amazing. That's so good, you guys.
Well, now at least there's a visual. Like, we've been talking about this for years and years, about all these things that we're replacing and all of this, and now it's like we actually have a visual of what we were talking about.
That is dedication.
That is dedication, yeah.
Maureen, you can actually pick something up off the floor.
She's so curious.
It was like, wash your hands.
It was dry.
Oh, yeah.
It dried up. She loved to tell about it.
We also, in that meeting, before we went on the tour, reviewed the expenditures for the third quarter to date. We reviewed the end-of-the-year audit, which we talked about today, as well as the capital expenditures, expenditures to date. I also, at that meeting, gave a huge thank you to Ted Buckley, Kevin Corcoran, Kenny Lewis, and John Kelch for their amazing effort to get the new scoreboard up at the softball field in time for the first home game. Teamwork definitely makes the dream work. We met last Friday to discuss the grandstand bid. As you may recall, we went out to bid prior pending support of the Article at Town Meeting, and we received one bid, and it was a tad high, to say the least. So we met to decide what the options were headed into Town Meeting, whether we were going to withdraw it or try to amend it last minute, which you really couldn't do anyways, because the book was printed and the votes were taken. So the committee decided that we are going to go back out to bid and hopefully try to get more interest. The consultant and engineers on the, on the project strongly feel that the bid was inflated, and if we take up and do it again either this summer or this fall, extend the bid date as well as the construction timeline, we'll hopefully get some more interest at a more realistic price to get that. a more realistic price to get that project done. And at today's meeting, the committee discussed the chiller and the OPM contract that you all just voted on, so thank you for that. And, that is the end of the budget facilities, subcommittees' work for the past six weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, CBAC.
Can I say? Yes, we had a meeting prior, and we had a presentation by Christine Sheehan, who works at BES as a speech pathologist, if I'm not mistaken, and it was about assistive technology for learning in, um, communicating, helping with communication play in academics. So, basically, how we can use tools or devices to help children with disabilities to do something that may otherwise be too difficult for them to do, so it was a interesting presentation.
Thank you. Um, the collaborative, Maureen?
Um, well, in the adoption of the new articles of agreement, it is stipulated that at least once a year, we give a updated report of what's happened in the collaborative in the recent, um, more extensive than what we usually just mention month to month. They came out with their um first ever quarterly newsletter, um, I hope you had a chance to see it. I sent it out to the, to the committee when I first got it last month, um, and collaborative board wanted to be the ones to share it with the administrators, as opposed to the director of collaborative sharing it with the administrator, so, um, it was put in the, in the folder. But I just want to say, I'll tell you what the, um, what the message is, the collaborative serving its nineteen members now, school districts across the Cape, continues to deliver high-quality, cost-effective educational programs and services. Um, we know that Dr. Hope Hanscom joined us and is our new executive director as of January 21st. So, um, Waypoint Academy, that services our grades five to twelve students, welcomed Mr. Larry Carroll as their interim program director. Um, they had a full PD day, and staff members participated in professional development on writing and implementing IEPs, something that's been going on in all school systems. Um, and Waypoint began a partnership with the Cape Kids Meals to provide a food pantry for students to access when they need it. The STAR program, which services um K to twelve students, um, enjoy drumming sessions, they have a lot of enrichment things they bring in for their students, so they have these drumming sessions that the kids really get involved in, um, a trip to the Blakeman Planetarium where our students are going, um, and educational activities around Black History Month. They began also partnering, partnering with Cape Kid Meals to provide weekend food to students, and hosted their two fundraisers for a facility dog, which they hope to be have, have at the start of the next school year. The transportation services remain focused on recruiting and training, um, including targeted advertising and social media outreach, they're always looking for drivers, and um, efforts are also underway to refresh the fleet amid the cost and market challenges. So, things that they accomplished this year, um, they have their, they had their usual legislative breakfast in January, we got the Articles of Agreement to accept Plymouth Public Schools as a full voting member, and they're ongoing advocating through Massachusetts Organization of Educational Collaboratives, known as MOIC, for increased funding and legislation improvements. So, that is their summary um for the collaborative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being part of that, because that's an extra, it's not really a subcommittee, we're a liaison um to the collaborative, and so, Maureen has been on that for the entire time, even on the committee, I think, right?
I took over from Chris.
Right, so that's a, it's a big job, and it's important, you know, to have representation on that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Seems like a full-time job.
Once a month meeting?
Just once a month.
Yeah, it was a hiring, when they hired their new director, that was it.
Yeah, it was Maureen Hobbs, but now we're...
Thank you, Maureen. Um, okay, strategic planning steering committee, I'm guessing?
I already spoke to it.
Right, okay. Um, district diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging committee?
So, I have a um report from Jesse Clements.
Okay.
Who leads that committee. Um, so, the DEIB committee has been involved in the following, at BIS, the committee manned a table at the Light It Up You event, um, so thank you to Tara Stanton, Carrie DeGawen, and Teresa Vicente for their work there, Jesse Clements was also there, she didn't give herself credit, uh, but they had a wonderful table at that really great event. At BIS, fifth grade students with the leadership of Mary Weatherby met with Food Services Director Chris Cushman to plan the lunch menu for the week. Uh, students researched each country that the lunch of choice came from, and the research has been read on the morning announcements this week at BES and BIS, and then their lunch relates to that country. So, it's really fun. Um, and then, at BMS, uh, they got very brave student council members, the, uh, they worked with the DEIB committee, and they decided that they were going to create a mural with every middle school student's handprint on it, uh, with the message, "All are welcome." Uh, so, we started that today during Wynn, we did put paint on uh the entire seventh grade's hands, and it did not seem to spread around the building, so we're very excited about this um mural that will be on display during our curriculum night on May 15th. The seventh graders did an excellent and clean job of making their handprints today, sixth grade will do theirs on Friday when they get back, and eighth grade is actually doing theirs next week, um, in a few of their classes. So, thank you to Emily Hogan, Lisa DiBiaseo, and Melissa Thorne, who are supporting that, those efforts.
Great, thank you. Um, and then, technology committee, was there anything additional?
Um, yes, we, district technology committee met yesterday afternoon, I shared the digital integration specialist job description with, with them, which we discussed in detail, and what the position would look like next year. I also made a pres, I also made a presentation and provided a brief training on parent squared of the committee. Uh, finally, we just discussed the summer technology projects and updates, and that was it. That was yesterday.
Thank you. Wellness advisory committee?
Sure, I'm happy to announce that the wellness advisory committee has concluded its work, and our policy was approved by the state. We had great representation, I think we ended up meeting probably about four times, maybe five, uh, throughout the year. Like to read off the list of all the people contributed, you'll see that we have uh representation from across the district, Andrew Arkey, Jesse Clements, Kathy Cleary, Chris Cushman, Nathan Deneen, Rebecca Esip, Kathy Johansson, Shel Kenyon, Ellen McLaughlin, Lisa Hanley, Jennifer Ward, Samantha Zeal, and Carrie McCray. Also, uh, just to thank you to the John Stocker Institute, and Coach Charlotte, who helped us through this process and gave us feedback, and um, that revised policy will be ready to present at the next policy subcommittee, and then move forward for a vote, so hopefully we'll hit our target of getting a fully vetted uh policy on the books by the end of the year.
Great, thanks. Anything additional for subcommittees?
No, but as a point of personal privilege, could I ask to take up the vote for the field trips while Mrs. McGuire, Dr. McGuire is here?
I was actually going to do that next.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Alright, great, Lisa, would you take the podium? I know, uh, DECA is, is attached, so we can do that one first, and then we'll flip over to the BMS ones. So, this is, just a reminder, we do one year in advance for out-of-state field trips, overnights, and such like that, so, they're ones you've heard about before, um, but, uh, Dr. McGuire is here, just in case you have any questions about the DECA ones that are anticipated for next year.
So, I am here to request the opportunity to pursue four overnight and/or out-of-state field trips for twenty-five, twenty-six. These field trips directly correlate with our classroom curriculum and the competitive events at the district, state, and international level. The ultimate power trip is the national kickoff of the twenty-five, twenty-six DECA competitive season. So, these are the four trips that we participated in this year, and as our program continues to grow and build, uh, we are really excited to bring uh this experience to both returning DECA students and new students, and as a point of uh interest, we have started a junior DECA program with the middle school, so we're really excited for those students to be able to uh learn about DECA and, and um the, the projects and the opportunities that, that come with DECA, and then be able to hit the ground running when they come up to the high school. So, next year, the ultimate DECA power trip uh takes place in November in Arlington, Virginia. The DECA District Day Conference is here in uh Hyannis in January. The state competition is in March in Boston at the Seaport, and then, the international, the ICDC trip is in Atlanta, Georgia in April. So, very similar setup to the trips that we did this year. Uh, one thing that I think is really great, um, is we gained over ten thousand dollars through sponsorships this year. So, I think, um, Mrs. Marie set up a really nice incentive program where students who went out to sell those sponsorships could get some money um toward their own trip, and then, some of that money was, was dedicated towards the program as a whole, to bring down the cost for everyone, and also to scholarship as needed, um, to defray the costs where we felt, you know, that was important for individual students. So, they're earning their own money off, and they're, they're contributing to the club as a whole. So, um, again, in our first year of sponsorship, in our first year of really engaging with the community, that was just an incredible um response, and it's just amazing to hear as, as students go out, uh, how many people were involved in DECA, in different districts and communities, and that's something that they've brought up and brought forward and can connect with, um, so many different, you know, partners and mentors in our community, and they have been working together all year, and will continue to do so as part of these trips. Uh, the planning and the preparation that goes into them is very, uh, very much classroom-based, but also above and beyond, students are in Wynn on a weekly basis, they're after school for hours at a time, they're working on written exams, they're working on oral presentations, they're working on their visual, uh, their boards and their displays and their presentations, so really, just the amount of work that goes into this, and the, the fact that we've grown to ninety-four students representing Bourne High School and DECA is just amazing, and we'd like the, the opportunity to continue.
Okay, um, so, we get a vote to approve the out-of-state um DECA field trips.
So moved, second.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, all those in favor of approving the DECA trips?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
And then, we are also seeking pre-approval for Nature's Classroom next year, and for the Washington DC trip next year. Don't think you need much.
Yeah, and I, and to be honest, I didn't bring much for you, um, we don't have the dates set, we generally set those at the end of each trip, so, I think we're just a little bit kind of misaligned on the timeline, um, I would really just be seeking kind of theoretical approval to be able to plan those trips and move forward with them. We would anticipate working with Nature's Classroom again, of course, and then similarly, continuing to work with the same company, um, that we work with in DC as well.
Okay, so we need a vote to approve, for initial approval of the Nature's Classroom and Washington DC trips.
So moved, second.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Nature's Classroom and DC initial field trips?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Approved. Thank you. Alright, and then, um, I'm just going to finish the votes while we're here, um, so we need a vote to app, award the Joseph Louis Scholarship? Did you want to speak to that? Josephine Louis Scholarship, I'm sorry.
Well, we have to keep it secret right now, but in your, um, in your hidden packet, uh, you do have the name of the recipient that's proposed, that's done through our guidance department, but in the charter of that scholarship, the school committee has to officially vote for it, so we would just be seeking you, seeking for you to vote it as presented, um, which is, like I said, in your hidden folder.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to approve the Josephine Louis Scholarship?
Move to approve the Josephine Louis Scholarship. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of approving the Josephine Louis Scholarship?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, scholarship approved. And then, we need, before we do our reorganization, I'm just going to do the final two votes, so we need a, a um, a vote to approve warrants and payroll.
I move we approve warrants and payroll. Second.
Any questions about warrants and payroll? Okay, we'll call a vote to approve warrants and payroll, Carrie?
Yes.
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 And I say yes, and warrants and payroll approved. Okay, and then, we'd also need a vote for the regular session minutes from April 2nd.
Move to approve regular session minutes from April 2nd, 2025. Twenty-twenty-one.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving regular session minutes from April 2nd, 2025?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent, okay, I think that's all the votes. Okay, moving on, so typically, we do not do our reorganization until the summer, but because this is um my, myself and Maureen's last meeting, there wouldn't be a chair in place, so we're doing our reorganization of the committee tonight, um, so that we have all positions filled, um, and once the election happens in two weeks. So, at this point, I turn over my gavel. To Dr. Joe, who gets to be the chair for a few minutes.
It's very exciting. Some superintendents say it's the most exciting moment of their career. No, you shouldn't take it, no, no. Alright, I'd like to call for a reorganization of the committee, um, and with this, I would entertain a motion for a new chair.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Donell as the new chair of the school committee.
Second.
There's a motion, the second, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, um, can we call a vote, please, all in favor of Donell Beals as the next school committee chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Do you accept?
I totally accept.
Dr. Joe, she doesn't get that gavel.
Oh, she gets a fancy gavel.
She gets a special gavel, because she's Donell.
Oh, my gosh, this is my gavel. Thank you.
We're going to be a wonderful chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. I have a few words, but should I?
No, no, wait, no, we'll just read, okay. We can do to finish the reorganization, so we need, go ahead.
So, now, you're going to call for a nomination for a vice chair.
Okay, I am going to call that we nominate um Carrie Schofield as the vice chair of the school committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Carrie Schofield.
And then, I...
And then, okay.
And then, I move to nominate Kendall and Gagny as secretary.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, Kendall, thank you, Kendall.
Thank you, Kendall.
For accepting, thank you.
Okay, and then, we also, so I'm just going to, may I speak? Is your...
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair. Our subcommittees, before, when we were, um, yeah, when I was organizing all of this, we have someone who volunteered for each of the subcommittees that they're currently on, uh, to be the chair of that subcommittee, so I don't know if we want to do this now, I think it might be a good idea, so I'm just going to give you that, these budget facilities, curriculum, and policy, these are the three.
So, those are the three, because we...
That volunteered, they're currently on that subcommittee, and so, they're volunteering to chair that subcommittee.
Okay, so I vote for um Kendall to chair budget and facilities in the Navigator Awards.
So, you can appoint?
So, oh, I can appoint? Oh, okay, I appoint you. Yes, I appoint you to chair.
For, for this year, yes.
For this year, yes. Yes, for this year. Okay, so do we need to do anything else?
Yep, so then...
Oh, yeah, the rest, okay. So, Carrie, um, I appoint you to be on the curriculum subcommittee.
Okay.
Thank you.
I accept.
Thank you, oh, terrific. Okay. And then, Kat, I appoint you to be on the policy committee.
Thanks.
Thank you, okay, and then, we have a few more for when the others join us? So, the Cape Care Collaborative will still continue with that?
Yes, your summer organization, like, your summer meeting, you can...
Discuss that.
Everyone can decide what subcommittees they want to be on.
Perfect, okay.
At least this gets, like, gets started, so...
Okay, the, okay, awesome. Okay, thank you.
There is a, a June collaborative meeting, if anybody wants to um think about it.
Okay. Well, think about that.
So, you might need an appointee.
And then, the district school wellness advisory committee, that's going to be done And then the District School Wellness Advisory Committee, that's going to be done once we get this, before we finalize this. Then we're done with the.
Does that continue as a standing committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Their official work for this year, the important policy has completed, but it should continue.
Yes, that'll happen. The Subcommittee needs to move on. Okay, so then do we just do the?
That's it?
That's it, thank you, everybody.
But can I, may I speak? Is that next to Madam Chair? May I say my final closing words?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to, kind of, this is our last meeting, so I want to, as you know, after six years on the committee, Maureen and I are going to be moving along and letting two new town members take our place. One who thankfully is in the audience this evening, so, Hi Rachel. And so it's wonderful that she got to see a meeting in action. But first, I just want to say some thank yous, because I've been here for six years and I feel like I need to say thank you to so many people. So first, I'm going to say thank you to Maureen, because for six years, she has been dedicated asset to this committee and to Bourne Public Schools. Maureen has been on numerous Subcommittee, search committees, building committees, negotiations, and the Cape Cod Collaborative the entire time. She's always willing to help, always willing to fill in when needed, and we can always count on her to ask questions that we didn't think to ask. So thank you so much, Maureen, for all of your years of service to the committee and the town.
My true pleasure and very rewarding, so thank you all for joining me and carrying on. I will miss it, and, but I'll be looking forward to what's all coming out. There's so many more exciting things to look forward to hearing from Bourne Public Schools.
Next, I would like to thank all the teachers and staff in these schools. There's been a tremendous amount of change and many unforeseen obstacles over the last six years. The staff has continued to work hard and put students first. Although sometimes you may not have agreed with decisions that this committee has made, you persevered and made sure students had what they needed in a safe and welcoming environment. Special thanks to Anne Marie Strode and Teresa Clifford for their tireless work as BEA representation. I hope everyone realizes that Anne Marie and Teresa always protect the best interests of their staff while still supporting the needs of every student. This district could not run without them in that position. Lastly, I would like to thank the administration. It's been a pleasure working with each of you, Kristin, Chris, Jordan, Christine, and all of the building administrators. You're rock stars, every one of you, and our schools are small but mighty, but this is due to the work that you do every single day, so thank you. And Carrie, six years ago, I was elected knowing that my very first task was to hire a superintendent. So from the day that you were hired and every day after, I knew you were the right choice for this district. We needed someone from the outside to come in, take charge, make changes, and lead us to success. And there have been many challenging times, but I truly believe that our district is a much better place since the day that you joined it. I've enjoyed working with you as the chair, and I know Donnell will step right in and we'll have just as strong of a relationship. Congratulations to you, Donnell.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I say a few words?
You're the chair.
Really is. Yes, okay, first of all, Maureen, thank you so much for everything you have done for, for all of us in this community. I hope really that you can really begin to relax and retire and just enjoy yourself.
I will try.
Okay, so happy retirement again. And you've worn so many hats in the town of Bourne, being a teacher and now school committee member. We appreciate everything you have done. So first, as an inspiring teacher, then as a dedicated member of the school committee, your journey with us has been one of commitment, compassion, and unwavering belief in the power of education.
Thank you.
In both roles, you have always put your students first and helped shape, helped shape a better future for our schools. You are by far always willing to go the extra mile for the betterment of our schools. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your selfless service to the town of Bourne and the Bourne school system. We are really, really going to miss you.
Thank you. I will miss you too.
And then Emily, so I'd like to take a moment to rec, and I just wrote this hoping I would become chair. I was like, bottle of whims, I better write something. Yes, so I had this all planned. Would like to take a moment to recognize and thank someone who has dedicated their time, energy, and heart to our school community, our outgoing chair, Emily Berry. Under Emily's leadership, we've seen meaningful progress, thoughtful policies, stronger communications, and decisions that always put the students first. Whether navigating challenges or celebrating successes, Emily led with integrity, vision, and deep commitment for every one of our students, our teachers, and family members. Thank you a million times over. We are truly going to miss you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Now you get to close the meeting.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Make the phones off.